It is now six thirty and I call this meeting of the Manchester Select Board to order a local vote. Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Solis.
Yes.
We all have it. Ms. Marison is here.
And Ms. Brown is here.
The first thing after the call is ordered is public comments on non-agenda items.
Did you go with your better going?
Yes.
I had a question concerning, follow-up to a letter from Denny Hall a little bit back about the Powderhouse getting on to, and that was a, that was a private group that did that. But is it, why is it that we are now responsible for having those units put on the subsidized housing inventory?
So we have, excuse me, we have a role to play in trying to facilitate that.
Right.
And we, it's a faster process if you endorse it. So that's our, so that's our role.
Um, but they-
But it does rely on, in this case, the-
The North Shore CDC.
CDC to fill out some paperwork and in particular to spell out their tenant selection process.
I guess my question is really, why is it that we are being put into the lead on this when our job is to endorse it, but how is it that they raised the money, got this through to North Shore CDC, and now they want the town to take over having it actually considered by the state?
Well, we can't take it all. We can, we can only play a role of facilitating it, being placed out.
I guess that was not a good way of putting it, because we're not taking it over per se, but I would say driving the bus on this one. And I, I guess, I guess my concern is that this is not, this was not a town endeavor, and I'm concerned that, that it will be misunderstood what the town is doing. So that's, I just wanted to ask where it was and-
I think we do have a role to play though, as Greg said.
Yeah.
And, and from my perspective, I don't underst-, it sounded like simple paperwork that had to be filled out. I think the resident had a question. It is simple-
It's not simple.
In his view, it was simple paperwork, and if it's not-
It's been going on, my, my, it's been going on for a long time.
I understand, let, let, if I can finish though.
Yes.
I think there is a disconnect between the perception of the group that funded this, right, as to how difficult it is for North Shore to fill in the paperwork and get it submitted.
Yeah, that's okay.
Versus, and I just think a little clarification would be helpful, because it is in the town's best interest-
Yes.
Absolutely.
To get that paperwork in.
Yeah.
And, and I think the residents are asking for our help, and there just may be a misunderstanding that a little clarification might go a long way.
I'm gonna ask Sarah Moll's question. Didn't John step up and say he was gonna try to help that out, help that along? Yeah, the last ZBA meeting, John Benares-
Good.
Who does this for a living, offered to, to take a look at that, as I recall. I don't know to what extent he was going to go, but-
Yeah, um, North Shore CDC is one of his clients, and he felt that he could talk to them and find out exactly.
Okay.
That's awesome. It just, because it's in the town's interest to protect us from forty, forty Bs that are unhealthy, to get that-
My understanding, the town has to add things to the SHI a private citizen cannot.
Right. And, but in addition to that, if I might, it's, whether that's on the SHI or not is not going to impact Shingle Hill.
It won't, but we don't want another Shingle Hill.
No, we don't.
Right? And so that's, that's the sense of urgency, I think.
Yeah, but one, even twenty more-
Right.
Is gonna help.
Yeah.
But, but North Shore, North Shore is the driver for this, is that correct?
Yeah.
All, all, they're the ones that really should be in the driver's seat making this happen.
Okay. Does anyone know how many of the units have been through the process of being advertised and validated?
I don't have an update on the number now. We can, we can get that, I just don't, I just don't know enough yet.
Yeah. I, it would probably be a good idea. There was an assumption that they would all go on all at once.
Right.
And, and I think that's still hanging out.
Actually, no, CDC was, was not wanting to evict anybody.
Yeah.
And so they were, they were doing it as, as attrition occurred.
Right.
So it's, it is happening slowly.
Maybe in your confused, free time, you could find out what the state is now and include it in a paragraph somewhere in one of your, um, bracket, right?
Yeah.
Let people know that progress is being made, but they didn't want to evict people. Yes, Sarah?
It's my understanding that you only need twenty-five percent of the units to actually be affordable in order to have all twenty-nine registered.
Right.
It was my understanding that they, I think it's seven, if I calculate right. I think they had all of those units done when they originally filed the paperwork nine months ago.
I think there's a lot of misunderstanding. I think it, two years is a long time and, and, but a clarification is in order, because it could really be helpful to the town.
Are there any other comments on issues not on the agenda, including people online, if there are? Okay. There is no chairman's report, and the, um, it looks as if we are up to date on the current action items. The number being pushed off to the second of January. I, I'd like to restrict the second of January to things that won't be of great public interest and don't need to be publicized. Not having a hearing on something that everybody cares about, that they don't hear about until after they get home.
Right.
You're referring to Ocean Street?
I'm, yes, Ocean Street, um, we will schedule a public hearing, that's easy. Anything else on the action list?
Should we add Powderhouse Lane to the act, so that we can just keep on top of that and?
I, I, I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah.
We do have a role to play-
Yes.
Until the paperwork gets filed.
Okay, so on the sixteenth of January?
In the meantime, should one of us reach out to John Benares and see what he's doing or how?
Let me touch base with John.
Okay, excellent. That worked.
Great. The next item on the agenda is the tax classification hearing.
I move the Select Board open to task classification in the round.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alvin Fager, Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Solis?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Anne says yes. Please.
My name is Michelle Brandt, supporting, and I'm the political assessor for the Town of Manchester by the Sea. Tonight, we have with us, um, Mr. Jeff McElroy, the chairman of the Board of Assessors. So we are here for the classification hearing for fiscal year 2024. The purpose of the classification hearing is for the Select Board to determine the allocation of a local property tax to be borne by the four classes of real property and personal property for fiscal year 24. In deciding the allocation, the Select Board must adopt a residential factor. The residential factor is used to determine the percentage of the tax levy that is applied to each class of real and personal property. The Board of Assessors applies these percentages to the individual property classes according to Mass General Laws, Chapter Forty, Section Fifty-Six. The Select Board must vote on the following. We have four items that we need a vote on tonight. The classification shift of tax rate, residential exemption, the small commercial exemption, and the open space discount. Some information, some salient information and facts about fiscal year 2024. New growth is slightly up this year from last year due to building permits on the residential side, on the residential class. Commercial class has decreased from last year, new growth. We didn't have much going on this year. Personal property new growth increased over the last year due to the utility appraisals, our five oh fours, that we are mandated yearly by the State of Department of Revenue to conduct on a yearly basis. So residential new growth is eighty percent of the overall this year, with commercial, industrial, and personal property together twenty percent. The total taxable value for the town for fiscal year 24 is three billion, three hundred and ninety-seven billion, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventeen. And ninety-four percent of this is designated to the residential portion, we don't have any open space in town, and the other six percent to commercial, industrial, and personal property. There's a breakdown of the tax levy underneath, and you can see the very large line. We have an unused levy limit, which is also known as the excess levy capacity of six hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty-three cents. So to go on to the first item we will need to vote on is the tax rate. The residential factor for the tax rate. The residential factor adopted by a community governs the percentage of the tax levy that is to be paid by the residential property owners. A residential factor of one will result in the taxation of all property at the same rate, which we also know this as uniform tax rate. Basically, your residential and commercial, industrial, personal property would be all at one rate. However, the law allows the commercial, industrial, and personal property tax rate for the Town of Manchester by the Sea to be as high as fifty percent above the uniform rate, and the residential open space to be as low as sixty-five percent of the uniform rate. Historically, Manchester by the Sea has always maintained a single rate. Shifting the tax onto the commercial, industrial properties would create a tax burden for those properties, while the residential properties would only benefit from a small saving. Manchester's total tax evaluation is comprised of ninety-four percent of residential and six percent commercial, industrial, and personal properties. So the details are on spreadsheets on pages ten and eleven. So page ten basically shows the shift in the overall levy, if you were to shift ten percent, twenty percent, forty or fifty percent, how it would shift from the residential class to commercial, industrial, and personal property. And then if we move to page eleven is where you actually see the shift. If we were to shift the tax rate by ten percent from residential to CIP, we would show a saving of eighty-four dollars and forty-one cents. If we were to shift the full fifty percent, it would be a saving to the average residential value. So that would include single families, condos, vacant land, apartment buildings. In an average, it would be a decrease of four hundred and twenty-two dollars and three cents. However, the ten percent shift would increase the average commercial value by eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-four cents, and the increase of fifty percent would increase the average commercial tax rate, uh, tax amount by four thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-one cents. So you can see what that shift would basically impact, commercial and industrial properties. The second item that we need to have a vote on tonight is the residential exemption, and the Select Board may adopt an exemption of up to thirty-five percent to shift the tax burden within the residential class from owners of moderately valued residential properties that are the principal residence of a taxpayer, to a higher assessed properties and properties that are not the principal residence or domicile of a taxpayer, second homes, for example. This is not an actual exemption, but it is a shift of residential taxes to non-owner-occupied property owners. This exemption was originally adopted by several Cape Cod communities as a means of forcing summer residents to pay a higher share of the tax levy than would year-round residents. Cities such as Cambridge, Somerville, and Boston have adopted the residential exemption because they have a significant amount of non-owner-occupied multifamily properties such as apartment complexes. Since most residential property owners in this community consider Manchester by the Sea to be their principal residence, adoption of the residential exemption would serve only to increase the residential tax rate while providing a tax increase to all Manchester by the Sea residential property owners, whose assessed value is over the average of one million, four hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. To adopt such an exemption in a community where a large majority of the residential properties are owner-occupied places an unjustified additional burden to the other residences. Scenario of the shift is in worksheet residential exemption, and that is on page twelve. We have approximately sixteen hundred single-family properties that could potentially qualify for this exemption, so that would drive up the residential tax rate for the rest of the properties, the companies that are above the average residential value. Small commercial exemption is item number three. This exemption is similar to the residential exemption above. It is beneficial to communities with a high presence of large commercial properties. It shifts the burden within the commercial class from small businesses that are valued under a million dollars with an average of ten or less employees during the previous calendar year to larger ones and to parcels in the industrial class. In order for a commercial parcel to qualify, every business occupying the parcel must also qualify for the exemption. Since most businesses in Manchester by the Sea are small, we would not see a relief in taxes. We would see an additional tax burden to larger commercial and industrial properties. The exemption goes to the building owner, not the business owner. Therefore, depending on lease agreements, a small business owner may or may not benefit from this exemption. And then I gave some examples of communities who have adopted this exemption, Avon, Braintree, Somerset, Westford. Assessors may determine the annual employment for a sole proprietorship or partnership. For all other businesses, they must reply, rely solely on the determination of the Director of Labor and Workplace Development. An annual allocation process is required confirming payroll information. And the details and the impact of a small commercial exemption are listed on page thirteen. And the last item we will need a vote on tonight is open space discount. We currently do not have any land classified as open space, but if we did, the Select Board could grant such an exemption percentage of up to twenty-five percent as decided by load of the Select Board each year. The discount may reduce the amount of the levy paid by the open space class to no less than seventy-five percent of its full fair cash share of the tax levy. The Select Board by an annual vote may allow for a discount for all Class Two open space properties. Adopting an open space discount lowers the open space tax rate because the amount of the levy paid by the class is reduced. Those taxes are shifted to the residential class alone, which means a higher residential tax rate. So of the three hundred and fifty-one communities in Massachusetts, nineteen classify property as open space, and some of those communities are Ashland, Bedford, Berlin, Beverly, Dennis, Irving, Falmouth, Lemonster, um, Nantucket, New Ashford, Mashpee, Newburyport, Norfolk, Paxton Rowley, South Hadley, and Sturbridge, and actually Wentworth as well. And there are more details on page fourteen regarding the open space discount.
Are there any questions from the board?
I just have, yeah, just one question, and that, the total, total taxable value went up fourteen percent.
Yes.
That's purely based on sales of units here in town?
It's based on sales and it's based on improvements.
And improvements.
Improvements and additions.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so it's not just sales of, uh-
No, improvements as well.
Okay. I'm just curious how the sales compare with other years for this past year. I know real estate's been quieter, perhaps.
So, it has been quieter, but only because the inventory is so low.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
And I'm just curious what the end number is that you, you get the fourteen percent on. In other words, the sales are-
So the end number is sales.
Yeah.
And also, um, like I said, improvements, rents are high, so when we do our income approach, that's, that's up as well. So all of those are taken into consideration.
I, I guess my question is, how many houses were sold in Manchester this year? And how does that compare with last year, independent of these improvements?
So I don't have that number in front of me, John, but, um, as far as arms length, not private sales or-
Yeah.
Divorces, or about sixty-five to seventy.
And how's that compare with previous years?
It's, it's pretty much the same. Pretty much the same amount. However, we're seeing a big amount of private sales. So forty-nine percent of the sales in the residential class were coded out as private sales. There were sales that never hit the balance or the market.
That's what Mary Ann is saying.
So that's what we're seeing.
There's no ulterior motive here. I'm just curious, but, yeah, so that makes it hard to really know how the values are moving around, because you don't-
Makes it hard to know how the values are moving around, but we also cannot use those sales in our analysis.
Understood.
And they're well above assessed value, but unfortunately, we have to code those out and not use them.
It's about half.
Wow.
It's a lot.
We send out sales questionnaires, and of course, when I go out to inspections, I have conversations with the taxpayers, and I'm hearing all the time how I reached out to so-and-so because my son was looking for a home in town, and so we were willing to pay above asking just so that property would not be listed. And we are actually continuing to see sales going up. That trend is.
Okay, good. Kinda makes the increase more, 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 the, more valid, the bigger the yen is, but.
I move that the Select Board close the evidentiary portion of the hearing.
Second.
Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
John says yes.
I read the wrong thing, John.
Yes, I did.
I'm not sure.
I got the next.
You trade off.
You get the next one.
Okay. Um, do I hear, um, motions?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Um, setting the residential tax rate forming factor.
Yes, I move the Select Board set the residential tax rate factor at one, resulting in a single tax rate for all properties.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? John?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
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 Becky says yes. Is there another motion?
Yes, I moved that the Select Board decline to offer any property tax exemptions.
This covers the exemption, the residential and commercial exemptions.
Second.
And open space.
And open space.
And open space.
Open space, yeah.
Okay, I thought that open space was a discount, but they all fit in.
They're open, consider an open exemption.
We're having it anyway.
Right. Well, you know, if you can't play over trivia, what do you want? Okay.
I seconded that.
Is it, is it motion second? Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
John says yes.
Um, I, I move, I, I actually got one more.
I move the Board close the public hearing.
Second.
Becky?
Yes.
Yes.
Kathy? Anne says yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You put a lot of work into this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And it's, it, it sounds as if we don't care because we just passed whatever was written down for us, but in fact, it's very valuable information.
The documentation and analysis was excellent, as was the write-up, which is why we walked in here, understanding what you wanted. Yeah, very well done.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, and your committee.
Thank you. Come on, schedule too.
Ms. Jakes, I was gonna have a conversation. Talk about schedules.
Fine, right?
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the ZBA filing fee increase. And we have description, um, and Ms. Mallach, would you hear this one?
Sure. Sarah Mallach, Chair of the ZBA. Um, I've done some research, um, and I looked through some old files, and the permit fee in two thousand and one was a hundred and seventy dollars. It was increased to two hundred and forty dollars sometime between two thousand and one and two thousand and ten. When we did that increase, at that point in time, the applicants paid the registry filing fee and paid for the abutters list. Because those recordings didn't occur at some point before my time, they changed it so that the town started paying the recording fees and the town paid for the abutters list. So people are paying much less than we expected that they would pay. Area towns range from three eighty to six fifty-five for permits. Currently, we have a separate fee for special permit variants and a combination of special permit and variants. The work required for that is the same, so I'm suggesting we have one fee. I looked at the actual fiscal year twenty-three expenses and the actual apps, and our cost per app is a thousand, twenty-seven dollars. So we're not exactly making money. And, and so I'm recommending five hundred dollars for special permit variants or a combo, and a thousand dollars for a comprehensive permit, that's currently five hundred. The comprehensive permit would be a forty B, which we can't even speak about how much that costs us. But that fee includes reviewing the application, following up multiple times with the applicants, doing the abutters list and paying for the mailing. Now, a lot of towns charge for newspaper, public hearing posting, which we never have done, and then the registry deeds filing fee, which is now a hundred and five dollars per application. The five doll, hundred dollars is one tenth of a percent of a five hundred thousand dollar project, or one percent of a fifty thousand dollar project, and we don't see fifty thousand dollar projects because we only see applications if they're changing the footprint or adding a second story on a house that's in the setback. So in the overall look, this is not a lot of money for an applicant to pay. The projects are big. You know, the only thing, the cheapest thing we see are swimming pools, and we're trying as hard as we can to get those so they don't require a special permit. That hasn't gone very far. We get them every month. And I'm suggesting that we make it effective for applications filed after December thirty-first.
Okay, so, so question, so let's- Okay, so, so question, so let's, the, the, so the out-of-pocket cost on a five hundred dollar fee is the abutters list, which otherwise, well, no, actually, actually that's not an out-of-pocket cost, because that's coming from here.
The towns.
Yeah, the towns' out-of-pocket costs.
The towns' out-of-pocket costs are mailing for the abutters list.
Okay, okay.
Which it depends on how many abutters there are. And the registry of deeds filing fee of a hundred and five.
Okay.
And then the internal cost to, of support, to do minutes.
Yes, all, all of that, okay.
Yeah, employee, employee costs.
And then the hearing notice.
Oh, yeah, the hearing notice posted in the paper and I honestly don't know what we're charged for that.
Alright.
It varies based on how big it is.
Right, it's, it's a couple hundred dollars.
Okay.
Okay, so more than half is probably going out on out-of-pocket costs on that.
Yeah, more than half.
Yeah.
Okay.
Becky.
Um, does this at least break even?
No.
No.
Right, so that's, that's.
He pays a thou, he costs us a thousand.
So why do we leave it so low?
I just was trying to be.
I mean, there are other towns that, that you've reported.
Yep.
That, that do significantly more. I mean, I don't see why we're subsidizing that or why we should.
So then, a, applicants also pay for the building permit. So that would be a separate fee, and that's based on value of construction.
But that goes to the building part, that's a different pot, right?
Well, all the money goes into the town coffers, but, but yes, it's a separate process. That's based on the fact that they, the assumption is they cut their, a permit, same amount of work is included to denial as it is. I mean, okay, but we can't, we don't deny very many.
And we charge the same for an appeal.
Right.
You charge again for an appeal?
Yes, it's a different applicant on the appeal.
Right.
Okay.
And they've always been charged the same amount as the underlying permit fee. We don't work much.
Can we look at this incrementally and maybe try to chip away at this thousand dollars? Start with this number that Sarah suggested and come back in a year or two years as opposed to one big jump now?
I, I have a question around that. So you said that the appeals are charged the same amount, so they would also be charged five hundred dollars. Is it the same amount of work to, for an appeal or is that less?
Usually more.
Usually more, okay.
Um, yes, usually town council is involved in an appeal or may be involved in an appeal. And it's, and the problem with an appeal is, to be honest, we don't get as much information on an appeal as we do on an application.
Got it, okay, so you have a bit more info.
And you got two sides on an appeal.
Did you consider having a separate dollar amount for an appeal and if not, why?
We've always had the same fee and it just doesn't make sense to have a whole bunch of different fees. We, we, we have enough problems now collecting the correct fee based on whether it's a special permit or a variance or a combo. Sometimes things change in process and I don't see why an appeal would be any less.
Right, so I'm, I'm a big fan of one rate because I, I think that's, that's easier, less bureaucratic, et cetera. However, I, I, I'm kinda thinking of the same thing Becky is. We, I'm wondering why we're not covering our costs and why we're subsidizing privately funded construction.
Yeah.
I'm not a huge fan of that. So um, if we decide to take Brian's approach and do it a little bit at a time, can we at least go up to seven fifty? I mean, we're still not covering our costs, but we're getting closer to our costs and maybe then we can look at other ways that we can improve our efficiency to get our costs down.
And, and if I may also, additionally, it's just, you, we haven't raised them in ages.
Right.
So, so by, by doing an increase, we're, we're not even catching up. But, but I think if we increase the current amount this time to say seven fifty. And then come back at another time, I just.
I, I could go either seven fifty or a thousand, whatever, I just, it, it strikes me as we, we don't wanna take a big jump, but we're really impacting different people. I mean, how often does the same person come in front of the ZBA for a new project, right? So I, I, I don't think we have to be as concerned about the jump because it's probably.
I mean, certainly when I did renovations for my house, I didn't even think of what
Right.
the, the special permit fee was. It wasn't part of my equation and I think that's true.
So, I mean, I could go for the thousand, to be honest. If that's, if that, we have documented what the costs are and we're just trying to cover our costs, I think that's appropriate. Um, as long as it's, but it's a little bit out of where the other towns are, are, that's the concern.
A thousand dollars is the average cost and I suspect that there are some that are less and a lot that are more.
I mean, we've had, yeah, we've had some that have been continued four or five times because.
I think that's the key thing.
That's the problem.
You know, and there's some people, they go right through, I paid a thousand bucks for what?
Yeah.
And there'll be the three or five, I don't know how many you go through in a year.
Well.
But there are a few outliers that just.
Twenty twenty-three, we had twenty-one applications. I think this year we're closer to between the twenty-five to thirty number.
So you have to kinda walk a fine line without, I understand the problem.
Yeah. The, the outlier tend, outliers tend to be swimming pools, that the smallest, the lowest cost project.
Oh, the lowest.
Lowest cost would, uh, well, I don't know how much a swimming pool costs, but I think they're north of a hundred thousand based on what we're seeing.
Them is a little infinity pool.
Yeah.
Okay, so just even, even, even a swimming pool is going to be more than fifty thousand, so we're not talking.
Yeah, I, I. There, there's no project that you can do for fifty thousand if you're doing a swimming pool or impacting the footprint of your home. You can do, I don't, maybe you can do fifty thousand renovation, dollar renovations, but.
Within the footprint, yes.
Yeah, within the footprint, and that doesn't come before us.
Right. Um, personally, I have a reluctance to cut the dog's tail off an inch at a time.
Just don't get it one time.
I don't wanna come back next year and talk about this again.
Yeah.
So I would take a motion for a higher fee. And a sing, a single fee for um.
Comprehensive permit.
Special, a single fee, a single ba, dollar amount for a special permit variance. Or comp, uh, or a combination.
What, thousand and fifteen, you know, a thousand and fifteen hundred for uh.
Comprehensive.
Comprehensive.
If that, the comprehensive is only for forty Bs.
Yes. We're not gonna see too many of them.
So, is there?
So there's a motion. Well, is, is, is that a thousand or you're on a fifteen hundred?
That's on just comprehensive.
Like fifteen hundred would be for comprehensive, which we don't see very often in recent.
One thousand for special permit variance.
How many did you, would fall into that category this year?
SLV.
Yeah.
That was.
That's a comprehensive.
Okay, so that's not, that's not a.
We don't have a prayer.
For the average person here, or even the above-average person, this is not, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so fifteen hundred and five hundred.
No, those, for the increase of.
We're gonna cut the dog's tail off off of it.
I move that the board increase the ZBA filing fee for special permits and variances to one thousand dollars and fifteen hundred dollars for the comprehensive permits to go into effect with the first of the new year.
What about appeals?
Yeah, I was gonna say a friendly amendment to include um combination permits at a rate of one thousand dollars.
And appeals.
Thank you.
And appeals.
Mm-hmm.
And appeals. First amendment accepted.
Second.
Seconded.
Okay.
The amendment and the, well, the motion to start with.
Debbie, do you have that?
It's recorded.
Okay.
Watching Hallmark.
Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
Becky.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Anne says yes.
John, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Good.
You're welcome.
You know, the difference between the finance, sometimes the select people, select just raise things arbitrarily.
I was just nervous making a recommendation to change it that much. I figured Brian would load it down.
Why? Come on, it's just, my concern was culture shock. But then again, if no one's, if they're not applying, you know, they're putting a mil, a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars, it's not a five hundred dollars. Most people don't even know. Don't even know.
Right, it disappears into the contract.
Mm-hmm.
And don't throw me on the bus.
Thank you. Um, it, I, I think we have handled that one.
Yes.
We're into discussion items and the first is the harbor management plan update.
Do we have Bayon on Zoom?
We do. Hi, everyone.
Hi, Bayon.
Hi, Bayon.
I'm trying to let you see me, not that you want to. Yeah, there we go. Uh, so the harbor management committee has had two meetings and one site visit with the contractor, Urban Harbors Institute. Uh, we spent about four hours on the boat, one of the committee members, myself, and uh, for three folks from Urban Harbors. And covered the entire Manchester waterfront from Chubb Creek all the way up to the Magnolia line with Gloucester. The takeaway, uh, well, so the discussion with the group has been whether or not we should move forward with municipal plan or the larger state plan, which takes more time. The initial thought was the municipal plan. After the site visit, Urban Harbors started a discussion at the last meeting about whether or not it should be a state plan given the amount of chapter ninety-one related land there is in town and what may happen with the development of that in the future. So it's still very much in early stages. There's another meeting on the eighteenth that I think the group will move closer to making a recommendation on whether or not it should be a state municipal plan. And it will be probably sometime in January or February, a moment when the town will have to decide whether or not to forward with that or hold with the municipal.
What are the advantages of the state plan?
Uh, so if the state approves your harbor management plan, if you, if, if the town is looking for ways to manage development, let's say a piece of waterfront property sold, the state absolutely positively steps in in those cases to make sure that the towns, within the town's legal rights, that there are requirements for a project be met. This is only on the Phil Tidlands, chapter ninety-one. So in Manchester, that would be Beach Street, Harbor Point, going back into Tappan Street, the Crocker Midchester Marine Waterfront. Those are all areas that are chapter ninety-one that would be of concern for future development. So the short answer is the state backs you up on any requirements or restrictions that you may legally place on development.
Okay, other questions?
And what is the flip side of that, of, of the state plan?
Uh, the flip side?
The disadvantages per se.
Uh, I don't know of any. That will probably come up at the meeting on the eighteenth. The committee, I know several of the committee members want to be very clear about whether or not there are any downsides to that for the town.
One question, Bayon, kind of just high level. What's your timeline for completing this harbor master, harbor management plan?
Uh, a year to two years.
From when?
I would say from when the contract was signed in September, I think. So probably on the safe side, throw, throw it in the middle eighteen months, so March of twenty twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay, thank you.
If it's a state plan, does that probably affect the timeline somehow?
It does, so that, that would make it probably closer to two years, municipal, about a year, so in the middle.
Are there other questions? Thank you very much. Um, we look forward to hearing the results of the eighteenth that we don't choose to be there.
And we have a meeting anyway that night.
Here we have a meeting that night, well, I assume.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I will be happy to share that.
The next item, discussion item is the launch service options. And I guess Bayon has one again.
Right, so I, I guess maybe I should throw it back to you if you have any specific questions. Manchester Mauring has decided they're going to relinquish operating a launch in town. They would like to see it remain in town. This was their first year of profitability. There's been a fair number of users of that launch service who've written emails and had communication that I forwarded on to the selectman's office. There is a lot of desire to see that service stay here. And Manchester Mauring has offered to sell everything, including both of the launches for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the town. I guess the only thing I would add to that is if there were a private entity or individual who came forward and expressed a desire to, to buy that from Manchester Mauring, the town should step out of the way. We should never get in the way of, of somebody wanting to run a small business. But there hasn't been anybody yet who's expressed any interest.
No, I, yeah, I have some questions.
Well, Becky.
Sure that you're, Bayon, has it, do you know if it's been advertised?
I have no idea. That's, that's up to the bakers. I, I don't know what they've done to promote or sell.
Okay.
Selling a launch service in and of itself, just as a launch service, doesn't hold a whole lot of appeal. It usually goes hand in hand with another service such as Mauring or in my instance, when I worked at Hawthorne Coat Marina in Salem, we had Maurings and two launches serviced on the boats of those Maurings. So as a standalone, it has less appeal.
Right.
Do you have any idea how many employees worked at Manchester Mauring before Tom?
I thi, I think Tom had four launch operators this last season.
Including, but then plus himself were four.
I, I'm sorry?
Plus himself or?
Oh, right, so if you wanna add Tom, um, in, in Charlie, probably half a dozen.
Um, the, do your numbers include for staff include Tom and Charlie?
Uh, I do not know. Those, that was the op, those are the numbers that. Those, that was the, those are the numbers that they sent over to me that I put into that spreadsheet. They didn't indicate, they did not indicate one way or the other.
So, Bayon, I have a couple of questions. Number one, looking at the numbers, and maybe it's in here, but I'm just not seeing it, but I don't see numbers for planned obsolescence of the boat itself. You know, at some point, you have to replace the launch, so.
That, that's absolutely right.
So, are, are those dollars included in these numbers?
No, I don't think Tom, I don't think Tom included those in the numbers he sent over.
Okay, so.
He certainly didn't indicate it.
Right, because I think for any financial analysis, you want total cost of ownership, which includes replacing the boat at the end of its useful life. So, that was question one. Question two, also on the staffing. It's, it's been my experience that people don't voluntarily give up profitable businesses, lots of businesses, unless they're a pain in the neck. And my own experience with launch services has been that they're really tough to staff. You need the captain's license or whatever. And, and so just, you know, following up on Ann's question, how many people do you really need to staff this service? And what would the hours be? And then what happens if someone's out there in the, in the ocean and they're after hours, you know? Oops, I came back late, you know? So, I'm just trying to understand that whole staffing picture, because it's been my experience that, you know, some of the marinas have given up their launch service because it's, it's tough from a staffing standpoint.
So, I can tell you Hawthorne Coast Marina, we have very clear cut hours. If you came in late, then you came into the dock and you got a dinghy and you went back up to Mauring and rode back in. Or you paid for space at the dock for overnight and came down in the morning, morning and got a lunch fried in. That's how, that's how we handle that. Probably four people would be adequate to staff the launch for the season. The, the advantage that the harbor department has is that all of the harbor masters are required to have merchant marine operators licenses, which are much higher and carry much more weight than just a launch operator's license. So, we have, we have staff who would be able to fill in in times of shortage.
With, with that, Bayon, if, if you're using harbor, your, your staff, are there any responsibilities from which they're being pulled?
Right, so that would, that would not be the norm. But I will tell you that on the shoulders of the season, when my staff starts the first of May and then are on duty until the end of October, May and October are much quieter. And we aren't there to deal so much with the day-to-day in-and-out traffic like we are in the summertime, but we're standing by for those distress calls for boaters that are moving their boats from place to place, getting ready to haul out, dealing with pumpouts, end-of-season pumpouts. So, the harbor master staff would be able to cover the shoulder parts of the season, particularly if, if we had college-age staff who returned to school.
Kathy?
I have two retired gentlemen who work for Tom Baker that want to be kept apprised of what's happening.
My, my thoughts are, this is currently a privately-run business, making a profit. So, if the town were to take it over, it should be wholly, the expenses should be wholly covered by the launch fees or the subscription service to, to the launch. Not one penny of taxpayer dollars should go to this service. And I wouldn't want us to be having to hire new town employees to cover the launch service. So, if we had to add additional staff at some point, because maybe it would be a popular service and maybe we would want to increase the staff, would we be able to do that without making them town employees? And are we sure the cost can be covered by a subscription fee? Because like I said, I don't see the, all of the costs in the spreadsheet that Bayon gave us. It does not include, you know, saving for a new boat. I don't know what the rest of the useful life is on the boat, but you've got to figure that into your total cost of ownership, and I don't see those numbers in here.
Right, so the, the bigger launch, the licensed launch, is three years old. That's going to last, and, and it's familiar with the launches up at the yacht club, they'll last at least twenty years. The smaller launch that would come with it as a brand-new engine, brand-new transmission with twenty hours total running time. So, those, both those boats have, if maintained properly, twenty years of useful expected life.
Yeah.
I, I also believe that the, the number of customers, sixty is the current number that Manchester Marine has, Mauring has, is very low. And it will take very, very little to get more people to sign on to the launch service. And if, if it's making money right now, every new launch customer will only add more black ink to the numbers.
I think, I think Becky was also aware that, I, the launches, at least the launches the club had, cost a lot more than twelve hundred dollars to maintain.
Right, well, there's a lot of support for the launch service, I agree. That's what it cost Tom Baker with his brand-new launch this last year to have it hauled, winterized, stored, and then launched in the spring for service at Crocker's Boatyard. Crockers and Manchester Marine both expressed a strong desire to see the launch service in town because folks who use their Maurings take advantage of those launches. And Skip Crockers told me that if the town is going to take over the launch service, then he would offer that haul service, winterize, and launch in the spring for five hundred dollars. That's where that number comes from. Extremely generous.
But he's not interested in running this himself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
And neither is Manchester Marine.
Nope.
One has to ask why.
Yeah.
Why, why are they getting rid of it?
No, why is Manchester Marine, why are Manchester Marine and Crocker's not interested in running this service off the Peterfloods?
They don't have the facilities. They don't have a lot of Mauring customers. They don't. Manchester Marine, right before I started, as I understood it, did try to do a launch service. And the challenge you, I think Becky or Kathy mentioned was the staffing, having licensed people. That's an ongoing challenge, you know, Yacht Club has it every year, getting licensed launch drivers. And just like Gloucester, who bought a second brand-new launch this year because their launch numbers have gone up so much, we have at our beck and call staff who already have licenses. We are faced with that challenge.
Becky?
I have one other question, and this, this requires your magic ball.
Yeah.
Is, is it possible that the, this increase in launch service is partly due to the increase in boat ownership, which happened during COVID? And will it continue? I, I guess my big concern is if we do this and the interest in boating perhaps subsides a little bit, especially if fuel prices continue to go up, is there, is there any evidence this is more of an anomaly than a, a trend that'll continue?
So, the, the boat sales really don't have any impact because it didn't change the number of Maurings in the harbor. And we're servicing Mauring customers, and we have seen a number of Maurings actually a few less than we, we did right before the pandemic hit. So, that, those numbers won't change. Is it possible that people would be less willing to use a launch service if things became tighter financially for folks? Sure, absolutely. That, that happens whenever there's an economic downturn.
So, do you know, so I guess, my current thinking is, need more information, specifically on the business model and the numbers. You've got to include replacement cost for the boat. Even if it's twenty years away, we plan for, you know, a fire truck to be, you know, bought twenty-five or twenty years. That, that should not preclude including that analysis and the numbers. The other thing is you've got to know your break even. How many subscribers? If you're going to charge whatever it is, five hundred, what's your break even point? So, I'm looking for a business model analysis, not so much can the town, just can the town help, right?
The town is being asked to pay a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the launch now. And there's nothing in this that will amortize that cost.
Well, then, yeah, my, my first statement was I don't want one penny of town tax dollars to be used for this. It's kind of my, I, I still have that opinion. The launch service would benefit very few of our fifty-four hundred residents in town. So, I just feel it should be a self-sustaining entity, a self-contained, you know, business.
I absolutely agree.
So, I'm just not quite sure that we can walk through that all tonight. It might make sense for each of us to kind of give Greg and Bayon the feedback that we're looking for. Perhaps have, you have two members of FinCom sitting right there, and perhaps they could advise us.
As soon as, as soon as we talk ourselves out, I'm going to give them an opportunity.
There you go.
So, I have a question. Bayon? What's involved in being a licensed boat captain? That, that seems to be a, a challenge here, the staffing.
That's a big deal.
And is that a big deal, or is that something like getting a driver's license?
No, it's, it's a little more involved than that. Took me four years working on a boat, eight months out of the year for a minimum of eight hours a day.
All right, so these people aren't walking around on the street?
Right, that, no, they aren't. But that's one of the requirements for being a harbor master is that you do have a captain's license. They're not walking around everywhere, but they are out there. And they are looking to get jobs driving boats. I, I would add that as far as an in-depth financial analysis, I, I will do the best I can. I, I, that is not really my wheelhouse, I can't. And I can tell you that the replacement cost for that boat today, just the one boat, not the two that are coming for the hundred and twenty-five thousand, approaching a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to have that boat built brand-new today. If the town doesn't want to get into the launch service, then Manchester Mauring will sell that boat easily for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. They've had offers from brokers for that already. They would love to see the service that they've started remain here. The reason they're getting out of it, they have, now they've reached the point where they're at eleven hundred Mauring customers. And that keeps them busy enough that they don't want to do the launch service anymore. They don't need to do it. But they also recognize that there is a need in the town for the four hundred or so boaters who are members of the yacht club, who are getting older, who like the convenience and appreciate having this launch service here.
All right, so you said there are eleven hundred customers right now.
He has eleven hundred Mauring customers, not launch customers.
Right, which are, which are, which are a natural audience for him. I mean, he's mailing, you know, Mauring bills to all of these folks once or twice a year. And I personally know, I got a flyer.
Yeah.
Because he maintains my Mauring, so he's chasing those folks if you don't have a dinghy.
The Mauring, well, not, not for the launch service anymore, but the, the Mauring business, his competitors are retiring and getting out of the business. His son wants to take over, so the Mauring business is really their focus and not the launch. And while they made money this year, they just felt like it, it, it wasn't where they wanted to devote their time and energy.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this?
I'll ask a question, and.
This is Sarah Melch, who works on.
Oh, sorry, Sarah Melch, Eleventh Dynasty.
Hi, Sarah.
Hi, Bayon. You get payment for your Maurings like by March 1st or something like that?
Right, so that's when everyone is required to have their annual Mauring fee paid, yes.
Is it, is it possible to get a commitment from Mauring holders in advance regarding whether they would be willing to pay for the service or not?
So, if, if the town decides to move forward with this, that would be one of the vehicles that I would use to let Mauring holders know that this is an option for them here in Manchester. And absolutely, I, I think I would, what I would probably do for those sixty customers who like to pay the annual fee and not per-use fee, there are different fee structures, how, how these work. But those sixty folks who like to pay that annual fee, we would just roll it right into their Mauring dinghy, weightless, whatever it is that they are paying, and, and make that part of the process, one process. Did that, did I hit the mark or did I miss it?
Yeah, I'm just, I haven't seen any of the numbers, so it's, it's hard for me to react, but it's, sixty doesn't sound like very many people.
It, it isn't.
Yeah, I just have a couple of thoughts on this. So, first of all, to John, to your question about the skill set, typically a launch driver needs what they call a six-pack license. And there are lots of college kids around who embark on this. You also need to have TSA approval because you're transporting people and you need to be periodically drug tested. So, those are the three criteria. I don't know, I struggle sometimes with the FinCom stuff about hiring lifeguards for the beach, you know, and staffing, seasonal staffing. And this has been a little bit of a learning experience, but if we've got harbor people who have enough time to be driving a launch, and the launch is a fairly time-consuming endeavor, I think we should be looking at the whole picture of staffing on the water. So, I, I think you're in the mode of hiring seasonal employees to do this.
Yeah.
It's, it's, I, I do agree with you, Bayon, shoulder seasons you could probably fill in, but the core of the summer, you're going to need people to do this.
Absolutely, and, and your point about college students is, is absolutely spot on. So, one of the, the things that we, we do have with the Reed Park docks, one of Tom Baker's best, most reliable launch operators is a young woman who came to work at Reed Park when she was a sophomore in high school and could tie a line off on a cleat. And she became a great dock attendant, was interested in the launch service, took the time to go out on the boat and learn how to operate the boat, and got her a launch driver's license, which is, which is a step lower than the six-pack, much easier to get. And she has expressed that if there's. And she has expressed that if there's a launch service in town, no matter who's operating it, she would like to work, um, 40 hours a week. So there, there are people with just launch licenses who are, uh, interested, retired people. As I said, I've been approached by two retired people and this young woman about keeping them in mind, uh, whether we get it or to recommend them if, if it goes to a private owner. There are people.
One more, one more question. Bayon, so there were 60 people or about 60 people that, that, that have these season passes. How, how many, how many dinghies are there compared to how many moorings? And you know that because you know how many mooring applications to fill out and how many of those people want dinghy, uh, want to register a dinghy. What's that difference?
So there's, there are about 200, I believe, I think the number is 220 dinghies, uh, in town.
Excluding the yacht club and the boat club.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't count, we don't charge anything for yacht club or boat, boat club dinghies. So, uh, just to come through the harbor department office.
If I, oh, I am concerned that your numbers don't assume that the town is putting $125,000 into boats of its own money.
Right, no, I, I didn't put that in there at all.
And it's bringing in by your estimate $13,000. And we have some doubts about maintenance. I'm not sure where we get our $125,000 back. But I'd like to see if frankly the chose we do.
And I'm fairly certain that finance committee will go right through them.
Now they'll, question number one.
So at this point, I'd like to see where they come back with.
Yeah.
Definitely more information. I think it would be.
It sounds like a really nice to have, yeah.
It would be nice, it would be nice to have it if it could be standalone financially.
Exactly.
Yeah, not requiring tax dollars.
From, from my perspective, I couldn't imagine it, uh, having it in the town if it couldn't support itself. I don't know of any launch services that are supported by taxpayers. I, I agree, I don't think that that would be appropriate at all.
But where, where do you come up with the initial purchase?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Or a payback on it.
Will Tom take back paper?
I think we've covered this, I think. Bayon, you know what we're looking for and I'm sure you will be talking with, with the finance committee about it.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bayon.
Thank you. Bye everybody. Have a nice evening.
You too.
True.
Bye now.
Bye. Okay, that was, um, the next question is the water main on Lower Forster Road. Becky.
I live on Forster Road. This would not impact me whatsoever, um, but I feel I should recuse myself. I'm going to go over here.
Seems convenient.
Gotcha.
Has the paperwork in the packet explains, um, Forster Road includes a inadequate water main. And Lee Gallagher has asked us to consider, um, upgrading it. And I thought it was appropriate for the board to ask Chuck what we thought it would cost, um, and talk about it. And is Chuck up on?
Chuck is, yes.
Chuck, would you like to explain? Would you talk?
How you doing? Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
How you doing? Um, yeah, so I mean, I just took a look at, at the numbers from our Walker Road project, which actually just started, uh, in earnest this week, although the, they have been out there. And, uh, I think it's important, just so everybody knows, this is a, or, you know, if the town were to take it on, it's a publicly bid prevailing wage job. It's not, you know, getting, uh, somebody with a backhoe to go out in the street. So, um, I'm sure the numbers are probably pretty sobering for folks that were thinking about this kind of avenue. Uh, we're happy to do it, um, but, you know, the moral of the story is it's about 860 feet is what I calculated based on, you know, the available information I have about the water main, uh, the existing water main, which I believe is a two-inch, uh, on Lower Forster Road. It does not currently loop up towards, uh, I believe it's Running Ridge Road. So, you know, from a town perspective, from a, you know, water system perspective, if we were going to take this on, I think it would be important to at least, uh, potentially loop it, uh, to make it more, you know, of a benefit for the entire water system. And so, you know, the, the numbers based on the Walker Road project that's, you know, ongoing is about 520 bucks a foot. So, you know, do the math on the, you know, footage and, you know, you're just shy of a million dollars for the water main work. And then there is, you know, some extras, which would be for, you know, a little bit of engineering and Conservation Commission submittals for CONCOM approval. And then also, um, you know, if, if we were to do this project on the Lower Forster Road, those residents would need a, um, bypass water main during the project so they, you know, would maintain water service. So that's, uh, you know, 860 feet of temporary main like you saw last year at School Street, that type of thing. Probably smaller, but same idea. So those are, those are the numbers that I'm looking at, you know, if we were to take this on. One other kind of element is, you know, Bennett Street is not too far off on my, um, you know, list of water main work that needs to be done. So, you know, potentially we could, you know, package this with Bennett Street when the time comes or accelerate the Bennett Street work, you know, if that were something the town wanted to do. Uh, and we could go from there, uh, to, you know, hopefully get a little bit better economy of scale. Pretty much all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Is Lee Gallagher on?
Yes, yes.
I would like to hear from you.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you get to see the numbers that Chuck worked on?
I, I did, and Chuck is, you're, you're right, I'm a little bit in sticker shock from your prevailing wage numbers. Those are numbers that we don't see in the private development world, um, at all, so. And I guess I would also question for the town, we're looking to, to supply these six houses. And I'm not sure, the looping feels more like a, uh, a betterment to the system overall rather than just trying to get water to these six houses. So I'm not sure if that is fair to include that into the whole, into what we're trying to accomplish, which is just get adequate pressure, flow and water quality to these six houses. I guess one question that came up when I looked over these numbers and, uh, being a, uh, you know, being a municipality that has to go prevailing wage and through the bid process, is there any means where a project like this could be done by the private sector and sold back to the town?
That I think is a question for Greg.
So, so that is a possibility, yes. It's, it's similar to, uh, taking over a road. So a climate developer will build a road to town specs and then the town will take, can potentially take it over. So you can do a similar approach on a utility where, uh, again, these, I, I, I agree that we wouldn't ask the six, six residents in question to pay for the loop. But in terms of that 400, or the 860 feet or so that, just for the six residents there, that, that could potentially be installed by the, uh, uh, by the owners. And then if, if there was some sort of a buyback, partial buyback, if the town wanted to do that or, uh, depending on how you feel the cost should be shared on, on the effort. So I, I agree that private sector could.
It was just a suggestion to, uh, to, to try to reduce the cost of this problem, that's.
Yeah, I fully agree that private, private individuals can do it less expensively than the municipality can, given our requirement for prevailing wages, et cetera.
At, at the end of the day, folks, the, I mean, the biggest reason I'm, I, you know, I'm even here right now is that we do have a problem. I explained it in my email to you that I hope you've all seen. And, uh, you know, it's a tough situation. It was not caused by any of you in that room or the residents. It was something that happened who knows how many decades ago. And a line was put on for a single house and over the years, the town allowed, um, all these houses to be tied in and there was never a requirement. And I think we all know that, I know personally that, um, you know, developers these days are held to a different standard. So we're just trying to figure out how we solve this problem that can be affordable to the residents and provide us with the, the water that frankly we're paying for.
This is, um, I don't know if, if I could be recognized for, among this, I'm also on Forster Road and two doors down from Lee. And I know he did, Lee did a great job describing the circumstances that we, we, we have and experience. But just to give you a little bit of, um, little bit of color commentary in terms of the experience we have, you know, the, at, at times the, the pressure is just a drip. You know, can't, can't take a shower, just barely a drip, can't do your dishes. It, it ends up creating a lot of problems with sediment. You have, um, plumbing fixtures failing all the time, um, even shut-off valves failing uh, off of, um, you know, uh, sinks and other areas. And it, it is, um, you know, something that has been picked up by various different, uh, various different, uh, residents, uh, along, of those six houses, including Paul Sturidey and now Lee. So it's, it's, it's certainly a problem. It's something that, um, you know, as Lee said, it's not something that anyone on this call i- is at the root of, but it's something that, you know, should be resolved. It made all the more confusion, all the more confusing by the fact that that line, uh, on, you know, in everything from the GIS package to everything else having to do with the town water information, is included in all that documentation. And is not flagged as a private one in any way, shape or form.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Becky, go ahead. Yeah.
I have a question about the legal structure of the homeowners. Um, is this a homeowners association that takes care of this private road? Or what is, what is the legal structure? Perhaps another resident, uh, could help us here, Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
But I, I want to understand the legal structure that we are dealing with.
Becky Jakes, 22 Forster Road. There is a road association, not a homeowners association. And there are no legal implications with the road association.
Are there, there are no bylaws?
There's nothing binding with the road association that forces anybody to pay into it or not.
So you cannot be, homeowners cannot be assessed fees?
No.
No.
So, so if I may.
Yes.
Question, so is this a public road or a private road?
It's a private.
Forster is a private.
It's a private road. It is plowed.
It is plowed.
Courtesy of the DPW, I mean, if.
Yes.
Push comes to shove, in theory, they don't have to do anything.
No, they have to.
I think it's this, I think it's a state law that they have, the town has to.
Oh, from a safety perspective?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I guess, um.
But there is, you know, not, not to bother.
Yeah, I just think it's important, um, I'm not sure, I'm sure town council has looked at this. But, um, before, it, it seems like we're just kind of outlining options here, but, um, to enter into any type of negotiation, you have to know who you're negotiating, who you're negotiating with, who's empowered to make decisions on the other side. And I personally don't feel clear on that. And, and the, the last thing I want to do is get this town involved into a negotiation where ownership of something isn't clear, um, because no good deed goes unpunished. So before we make any decision, I'm happy to discuss as many options as, and ideas as possible. But I, I think it's very important we get clarity on who we would be negotiating with and who is empowered to make decisions. And if it's not all six residences, is there a way for us to ask them to establish some sort of, um, association with, that outlines who the decision makers are? So if they don't have that in place right now, there's no reason that it cannot be put into place so that the town could then negotiate effectively with decision makers. You know, in a homeowners association, you have a board of trustees. I'm one, so I'm familiar with, but no, so I just feel that.
Todd, Todd, let, let Kathy finish and then I'll recognize you.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm looking at Greg because I think it would be very important because there, there's probably going to be some shared cost by some parties, whether or not the town is involved or not. And I just think, um, it's really important to get all that clear.
So, Cooper.
Yeah, I mean, that makes, that makes perfect sense. And, um, and I just hope that doesn't, I hope it doesn't take too long to do. And as, as Becky stated very clearly, you know, essentially, um, the road in sections is privately owned by different individuals. And then the, out of, um, respect for, for their ownership, um, voluntarily, um, residents on the road, you know, chip in to help out with road maintenance costs. There is no formal association. There, we, we would have to do something if it's a, if it's a negotiation. And frankly, just to hear that there might be a negotiation is a positive, is a step in the right direction. Appreciate, I appreciate that anyway. I don't want to speak for Lee. But, um, so, so I mean, that, that I, I find, um, hopeful. What we don't want to see happen, I'm sure, is to, to not, um, you know, not to see any forward progress or to, um, you know, just to, you know, we want, we want to keep whatever kind of momentum we have and we appreciate your attention that we have at the moment and keep that moving. And so we'd have to also understand a little bit about what, what the town, and maybe Greg can tell us that if not now, but maybe in a follow-up email, what kind of legal structure the town would accept as a negotiating counterparty.
And, and perhaps we could also ask Chuck for the standards to which a, a, a line would have to be put in for it to be expect, accepted by the town. So that you'd have a better idea of what the cost would be to do it front of them.
Right, and, and, because I'm just thinking out loud here for a minute, without clarity on the ownership, I mean, even like an eminent domain thing isn't, I mean, possible. I mean, so it's like, we really need the, the, the folks on Forster Road to, I guess the road association or, or a subset of the road association to, to, to clarify things there. Because I'm just not sure what the town could legally do with, with that lack of clarity.
Could I, could I say something briefly?
Yes, of course.
Thanks. First of all, I want to echo what Todd said is I'm very appreciative that you guys are even having this meeting. There is a difference of opinion and I think that the problem is that there isn't one entity. You have six customers of the water, that, that buy the water from the, from the, um, town that are having problems that they can't get the, they, they can't get pressure and they can't get quality. So, um, not being a condominium or being anything else, that structure doesn't exist. I agree with you, it'd be great to try to figure that out. But the reality is we've got six individuals that pay for water that aren't able to get it. And that's why we, that's what we have to try to figure out together. You know, we also have a concern, and I have not talked to the fire department about this, but we have a concern that we also. but we have a concern that we also don't have any hydrants nearby. The closest one is up on Bennett Street.
Actually, I have talked to the fire department about this.
Oh, you did, good.
And our trucks carry significant water. And there are other streets that don't have water. And so there are, there is another tanker in Essex that comes over instantly when a fire occurs on one of the streets that doesn't have hydrants. So it's not an ideal situation, but it's not dire either. Becky?
I just have a question. The tanker that we have in town, how long would that provide water for for house fires?
Depends on how hard they pump.
Yeah.
But no, they really need, they need, they would need outside assistance for anything other than, you know, something tiny and outside.
I mean, to us, to us, not the fire isn't important, but the primary issue is we don't have adequate water that we pay for, and we don't have the quality. And really, you know, each of us have tried to do different filtration systems to solve it. But, and I'll be honest with you, there's a difference of opinion on the ownership. But, you know, I've already, the town has had their attorneys look at the ownership of the line. We've had our attorneys look at the ownership of the line, and we get differences of opinion. And what I'm trying to do is talk and not, you know, not try to fight about this, see if there's a way that we can work this out to solve this problem for these six homeowners.
I just
Hi, could I be recognized?
I'm sorry, I don't, yes, of course you may, but
Thank you so much. Keith, I think is, I don't have Keith's last name.
Yes.
Yes, Lucci, I live on Running Ridge Road. Thank you so much. And I'm treasurer of the road association here, the Forster Road Association. We were incorporated in 1957. But it's for purposes of the road maintenance. But we've become aware of this situation. And we do look at lots of different legal issues in the normal course of our governance process. But out of concern for these six residents who are also members of our road association, which is really a completely separate entity organized for purposes completely unrelated to water supply. But we certainly care about what's happening with these folks. The question earlier about what entity you would be negotiating with, there are six of them, the six homeowners who are paying for water service. So I think that question is answered. The point, the question I have is with respect to the board's selectmen, to what extent has the board been briefed on the matter at hand regarding compliance with Massachusetts water law? And because I don't think the water lines in the town are linked to the roadway, asphalt maintenance, as to whether the road is private or public. I think it's, I don't think there's a link there. So the first question is, there are Massachusetts water laws and codes, and this line doesn't meet that code. And any municipality providing water has to comply with Massachusetts Water Resource Regulations. So I'm not sure, you may, folks have not even had a chance to look at that yet. But the second question of two is how, does the town have a written plan, a written maintenance plan and strategy that outlines the deferred maintenance on various waterways and what the projected total deferred maintenance is in dollars and what the schedule is? Is there a written maintenance plan for the town's water systems and the various things that was mentioned a few minutes ago? That there are other problems and others? So is there a written plan that then would relate to the compliance requirements that also come down from the state and that that plan would need to address? Thank you very much.
Greg? There is a plan, there is a plan to
So we do have a plan that goes out to 2050, 2049. Finance committee actually reviewed it the other night. Chuck and Nate have put a lot of time and energy into that. So we do, we do have that multi-year capital improvement plan to keep the system running well and to make the improvements that are going to be needed over the coming decades. In terms of compliance with Massachusetts law, that assumes that the line is a municipal line. And that's where the difference of opinion lies. Town council, in reviewing the records, was not able to confirm that it is a public water line. Yes, our water is feeding that line, but the line itself is, what we can tell, is not a public line. As Mr. Delica said, there's disagreement over that. And, you know, consistent with his spirit of trying to work out something, that's why we're talking.
Do those houses have water meters?
They do have water meters, yes. Yes. There's no question that's our water going into their homes.
What question? The comments of that gentleman just made me ask or want to ask, do we have another situation like this in Manchester where there is a private road and the ownership of the water lines is unclear? Or is this the only ticking, I wonder if there are any other ticking time bombs out there? And if, or is there a road that we know of that's private, that owns their own water lines, that could be useful in coming up with a solution? Has another group of homeowners come to some agreement? So I'm looking for an analogous situation here. Do we know
Or even sewer, you know, some public
Or even sewer, something analogous, that there's a best practice we can leverage or
Is it safe to say that this was once a line to feed one house?
Correct.
Right.
That's our understanding, it grew to a second house.
And then someone decided to piggyback on that and piggyback on that.
That's my understanding of the history.
But it was never brought in as a main line.
Correct.
And the only discussion, when we started talking about entities and who we're negotiating with, is only because there was discussions about working with a private contractor to reduce costs, to get away from David's pay, to get away from prevailing rate.
And Brian, just to clarify that, and Greg is right, there's a difference of opinion. So I'm not, I'm not trying to be argumentative here. But the, with the issue, when that line that fed one house, there's no question that was a private service line. As under what our lawyers have told us is that once it became feeding multiple houses, it becomes defined as a main, not a service, because now the town is using it to transport the water, to sell it to a multiple services, which, multiple homes, excuse me, which then brings it to the definition of a main. So again, there's a difference of opinion on that, but that's the way that we've heard about it.
What I'm saying is that I agree that we have to come up with a solution. And now we're just trying to hash out how to best way to get there.
So questions, that first house, that first house paid for that line to go up the road? To feed water?
Yes.
Okay.
I assume so.
And the second house hooked in, I don't know, in 1945 or something? And I don't know if they asked any questions, they just knew there was a water line there.
They had a lot of
And they just hooked in, and maybe they didn't ask anybody anything.
I don't know.
We don't know.
I don't know.
But in theory, a developer, I mean, all part of the process of developing, they'd have to provide for getting water, you know, the utilities, some there.
Right.
And so those folks kind of in effect peed back on
Yes.
the first folks. And they didn't have to pay for the development of a second water line to come in there.
That's correct.
If this was a new development, they would have dropped in
Yeah, no, so it's
Yeah, and if it had happened in the last 30 years
Somebody would have said something, yeah.
Correct, okay.
So back to Kathy's question, I'll have to do some homework to see.
Because what I want to avoid, you know, we definitely want to help these folks, and that's the sense of urgency. But if we do wind up with some kind of a partnership here, I don't want another mushroom blooming on the other side of town, right? And have to necessarily come up with an entirely different solution. I'd rather know, what's, what are we dealing with? And let's make a decision, we can stand up.
So for example, Boardman Avenue
Okay.
is a private road.
Okay.
They are served by town water, but they're private line.
Their line.
And they just, they just upgraded that line a couple, three years ago.
So that's their precedent. And do we know what type of legal structure they have, those homeowners? Or is it as low?
I don't know in detail, I believe they have an association.
An association. I mean, to me, that would be the proper, you know, I'm no lawyer. But you'd want something like that so there are clear decision makers, et cetera.
Yeah, so excuse me, so to that point, the Boardman folks paid for that line?
Correct.
Which was put in as a public project?
No, that's actually not
Am I wrong, Chuck?
Before we go down this road, that's just not correct.
That's not right.
The Boardman water main we did pay for. It is a town looped water main.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The roadway work was undertaken by the Boardman Association.
Okay.
There are several instances of shared services around town that, similar to this situation. The difference being that sometimes the services are on private driveways, this is a private road. So that's not uncommon. What typically defines the public water system is the shut-off that the town owns. They shut off the services. So I'm not 100% sure on Forster, but, you know, I can think of another one off of Pine Street where we would be able to shut off the water to a couple of different residences on a shared service. That happens often when there's leaks or, you know, stuff like that, where the property owners, whether there's an association or not, I agree totally that there should be associations that are responsible for these things, but that's not always the case. And that's not something that's in my control or DPW certainly. And so that does happen. The largest one I can think of is Coolidge Point, which is, you know, several houses out there and an unlooped water main. They even have hydrants, but there's just no mechanism, I guess, if that were to, you know, if there were to be a larger issue up there. And then the other thing, this does happen on sewer quite often, where the town only owns the sewer main in the street. But there are several services where laterals to several different houses, where, you know, we have no control necessarily. Now, there should be bylaws for water and sewer that cover these instances, but in the case of Manchester, I'm not so sure that that happens either. So, you know, there's certainly things on our end that probably need to be tightened up with respect to this kind of thing. But also, I think the property owners and associations would need to have a similar working bylaws or, you know, whatever structure.
Organizational
I think we'd be, I think we'd be great with doing the road work on the cleanup. I like the Boardman model.
Yeah.
I'm sure you do.
Yeah, well, that's what I, that's what I was saying when I started my conversation was, you know, there is a element of this where the town could take ownership of the main in the street, not the ownership of the street or, you know, infringe on the Forster Association. And it will be a town water main as it is further up Forster. But this is just not that case, because it's not a looped water main or, you know, serving any other town purpose. And like, I think we're all in agreement that this was a single service line that was piggybacked onto others, probably with a handshake and a, you know, attaboy from a developer. So I don't see how, you know, the town would necessarily take responsibility for that. And I don't expect these homeowners to, you know, responsibility for that. But that, you know, that's where we are.
Ms. Jakes?
And appreciate that
We're in a sort of conflict
Becky Jakes, excuse me, Todd.
No, it's Lee, you're interrupting.
Oh, sorry, Lee.
It's Lee who is interrupting.
Sorry.
Just to make a little clarification about the water on Forster Road. It goes, the main from Bennett or the water line from Bennett only goes up as far as a culvert. And from there up, everybody else is on well unless they've been able to tie in through Running Ridge Road. So there are two completely separate water feeds coming in. And the one on, that they're talking about only goes so far up the road to serve those initial houses. And it does not go under the culvert or through
But a majority of those additional houses on Forster Road are on that upper main, I believe. And there's only, I believe there's only four houses that actually are still on wells. The rest all tie into that town main. So it's these six houses that have been kind of left out of the loop.
Okay. Is there anyone else on Zoom who would like to speak? Anyone in the room who has anything to contribute to this?
Yeah, I'll say.
Oh, yes.
Sarah Melo, Sullivan Bennett. I just think the situation is unfortunate and that the town needs to help these homeowners. Everyone has the right to have decent water. And I believe these properties are too small to put wells on them, right? They're very small properties. It just seems like the town has to do right by them. That's my personal view.
Then we have to talk to her as a finance committee.
I'm sorry, I have forgotten the name of the man who had his hand up.
Keith.
Keith.
Oh, yes, thank you so much. And I already did speak, but I'll just, one other question and then a comment. Question being, on Boardman Avenue, what was that process like? And was the town, the town wound up paying for that line? Why is that the case that that's a private road? It sounds like perhaps it was originally part of a loop and was always considered a town line. But it would be interesting to know those details. But the other issue is, I think for these six homes, they're paying for water services like everybody else is paying.
Oh, let me just put in a word of correction here. The water service is paid based on the amount of water you use. And if they're not getting water
Okay. It's, we're getting water, we're just, there are times when if, if three or four people try to take a shower at the same time, there's not enough pressure. So you just have to plan your showers around your neighbors.
Sorry, that was slightly a cheap shot on my part. But if you don't pay for water that you're not getting, you just, and that really isn't the problem here. The problem
But we are paying, we are paying for water that is not of good quality.
Right.
That's right. I mean, I think if you're not getting it, I think you can also make the argument that the intention is that you're entitled to it and that the services are provided.
Well, again, I think we're going back and forth.
Now I recognize you, Chuck. Chuck, could you
I'm sorry.
Say a word or two about how the decision was made to put private money into the water main on Boardman Avenue?
Certainly, so, you know, again, Boardman is not so special. There are several private roads in town that have public water mains. So Highland, Jersey Lane, Forster on the upper side. So like there, if we, when we get to, if you look on my improvements plan for the water main, you know, there are portions of Jersey Lane on that, Highland Ave, Forster Road, that are public water mains that I think the town will need to replace that water main in, you know, due time, in the next 25 years. So that's not special. Boardman was at the top of that list, so much so that it was done three or four years ago because it was because it was raking all the time and causing service outages, you know, to, to much larger areas. So that, that is how it becomes a priority. Certainly, as I've, as I've said, all it takes is money. If, if the town, this board or, you know, town meeting wants to, you know, give us additional money to do additional water mains, you know, and we have some sort of agreement with these homeowners, like it can be done. There's nothing special about this water main. But I will say that this is a, you know, we've considered a private section and service. These homeowners that are on this section, the, the, you know, it was said that, you know, why can't we just do it with a private company? You can. We would not, the town would not get in the way of that, whether it's extending six individual one-inch services or one six-inch, you know, service. And, you know, the, the six own homeowners making their own association. Like that is, that is an feasible alternative to path forward for them to get a better water. Every new house that's built, they have to build their own water service into their house. So this is, this is not some special circumstance. The question is, who's going to have to pay for it? Because the price tag, and, you know, from my perspective, we do not have a town appropriation to pay for this work. For Boardman Ave, we did, for future work on other private roads, we will. So that's, that's where we're at now. So I guess, I just want to say this from our perspective.
Wait, 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 now we're beginning to go beyond what I'm prepared to put up with for people talking over each other.
Excuse me.
Becky.
Becky Jakes, twenty-two, Forster Road. So then, I guess, my, my question would be for this group of the, the six homes that are being discussed, what would their next step be? Or, and to whom would they come back?
I, I think we.
Or continuing this.
Identify several steps. One is to have some sort of an association with which the town can negotiate.
Okay.
Another, I think, would be to have our lawyer, the town's town council and the homeowner, the six homeowners council, at least look at each other's arguments and see if they can come to some common understanding. Or suggest a way out. Because this is, the, the question of who allowed this to happen and whose fault it is, is not something we're going to solve here. But if, if the two groups of lawyers can figure out something that would let us move forward, I think that's the second.
Would it, would it make sense for, because it does, I, I, I think there's general consensus that it is more expensive for the town to repair this line. Would it make sense for the six homeowners to get some private estimates, real estimates on what it would take for them to pay for the upgrade?
Yep, and, and make sure that it is upgraded to the point.
To the specifications, yes.
And then finally, Greg, I guess, what other circumstances under which something like that might be turned over to the town in some way?
Unless someone on the board has more to say on this, I think we've made a little progress. I think there's a general feeling that this is a problem that, that needs something other than it's not on our schedule for the next twenty-five years.
You can put it on our action items.
No, no, it's not on our action items. Todd, I appreciate your time, the time that you spent on this, and appreciate your very clear explanation of what's involved. And I like your, your diagram of where you might end up with a closed source. And everyone else who's spoken, appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem, we'll be in touch. Thanks, guys.
Debbie, if you need any names or addresses.
Okay. The next item we have is regional climate change work updates.
So, yes, wanted to give an update on, on the efforts that have been happening and are continuing to happen. The, the regional group is finishing up what we consider phase two of some of the work that has been funded through, through various grants with Harvard and the Graduate School of Design. So the second, so the first effort was focused on understanding the magnitude of the problem in terms of what a, what's, what about a sea level rise we can be anticipating, just looking at the various models, looking at what a category three storm hurricane might do to the area if it were to come through, to have us get a better sense of how do we protect ourselves against such, such events. Phase two has been focused on looking at some of the natural resources of the area and how those natural resources could be better managed so that they can act as a buffer, if I can use that word, to help mitigate some of the impacts of large storms. And that work is, is, will be finishing up over the next month and a half or so. Certainly by the first of the year, we'll have final reports based on the, that analysis of our various ecosystems and how we might better care for those ecosystems so that they can help us going forward. And now this third phase funds from congressional, congressionally designated spending approval through NOAA is to fund additional work with not only Harvard in doing some additional studies, but also funding various local organizations and outreach and community discussions and community education on the various issues and understandings that are being developed. And so this third phase, which is, which will be getting underway first of the year, is targeted to, as I say, do some of that education and outreach, but also look at some additional areas of study, looking at finances. What are the challenges that municipalities will have with funding some of these needs? Whether it be higher seawalls or elevating structures or trying to improve some of these natural ecosystems to help us. So how do we finance that? Second area is looking at governance. Are there different ways of communities to interact and to share resources and to share information as we try to tackle some of these issues? And another area we'll look at, better ways to engage the public. How best to reach out and how best to have good dialogue in communities and provide us with some, some models and some templates that we might be able to follow. And lastly, it'll be following up on some of the nature-based solutions that is looking at those various ecosystems and what additional improvements could be made. So this is all work that'll be taking place over the next couple of years. So this grant goes through the end of twenty-five, goes through December of twenty-five. And like I say, it'll be getting underway in earnest first of the year. So, so I wanted to give you that update. And as I indicated in my notes, we, we will be looking for some assistance in, in just handling the administrative pieces of the grant. And the town of Manchester is serving as, as the lead applicant, so the funds pass through us. And then we pay out, pay it out to the different sub-awardees. And we could use some assistance to manage those sub-grants and those subcontract. And so coming back to you, probably the first of the year with some proposals. One of, one of the likely people who would be submitting a proposal would be Town Green. Since I serve on, on that board, I, I need to step back and not be involved in that selection process. So we'll look towards maybe a couple, a couple of you working with other town staff to review those and, and make a selection going forward.
I'm happy to help out with that if that, I'll have a lot more time starting in the new year.
Don't say that too loudly, Becky.
Is this being done, will we have someone from the planning board sitting in on this as well?
Certainly welcome that, yes.
Might not be a bad idea.
Yeah, and conservation.
Yep, yes.
Yep. Sustainability committee.
Yep.
So, so yes, we need to, we need to bring more folks into, into the fold, so to speak.
But for this, this aspect, what you're talking about, you don't need all those people for that.
From the administrator point of view, no. But certainly, as, as the work gets underway and as we develop better repositories for all the information that's been gathered, different websites and making sure that that gets disseminated well and broadly. We certainly could use help with that.
So who, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So there are two, two things to be done. One is to have, you think, two individuals who will do the evaluating of the sub-grants.
Yes.
And, and that, you had suggested two people from the select board. I wonder if it makes sense to have a person from the select board and a person from the planning board.
That's fine.
Or a CONCON.
Happy to reach out, get one of each.
Yeah, we could, two people can work together, three people, yeah. Yeah, if, would that be acceptable to you, Becky?
Absolutely, yeah. And I, I, but I, I kind of agree with John that I think the CONCON person might be helpful, even at that level to be looking from that perspective as well. And I don't think three is impossible. In some ways, it might be a tiebreaker. Exactly.
Great question. So this project, so this is a project. And the end date, according to this information, is September thirtieth of twenty twenty-five.
Yes.
So are you, um, what is the outcome other than, is it just the final report that's the outcome of this project? A list of recommendations, I mean, is, is that the deliverable?
There's, there's more than that. So, so one set of deliverables are various reports that the various faculty and, and post-grad are reworking on. The various other sub-awardees will be working, for example, working with the high school green teams. And each of those high school green teams will be doing a project. So whatever project they complete will be a deliverable for that sub-awardee. There will be a, a series of, of, of webinars that'll be hosted. So that's another deliverable. There'll be a couple of conferences that'll be done, so that's another deliverable.
Okay, so this strikes me as something with clear deliverables, right?
Yes.
And who on the town staff is going to be the project manager for this?
So it's, there's a steering committee?
That wasn't my, I understand there's going to be committees.
No, I understand.
But when you're dealing with this many deliverables with deadlines, you typically want one person to.
Right, so that's, that's what I'm saying, we would, we would contract that out.
You're going to contract that out? Okay, so you hire a contracted.
Basically, a contract administrator, contracted administrator to ensure that those deliverables are being delivered on time and on budget.
Okay, so I, I was just using different terminology. I'm looking for a project manager to make sure things get done on time. Okay.
Yeah.
So that's great. And then are you, so then that, would that person be the one to collect the other project team members? Assemble the project team needed to execute these different deliverables?
Yes, yes. Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
And so there's a regional steering committee, but I think it would also be helpful to have a Manchester group, as you just suggested, to get more involved and engage with it. It would be very helpful.
So should I reach out to the chairs of the two boards and have them put it before their boards?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
And, and question, so refresh my memory, because I know you went over this a number of months ago. The KPN group that is steering all of this is comprised of.
So there's, what's called the KPN Coalition?
Yes.
Climate Coalition.
Yeah, that's what I want to refresh on.
Which is a less formal group, it's, it's basically volunteers. And then there's also Town Green, which is a more formal structure. It's a formal nonprofit with a, with a one-page staff and a board of directors.
Okay.
So those are the two groups, Town Green and the Coalition, working together. And plus, we, we work with the four different municipalities. We have contact with them to the four.
But they're involved with spending some of the money or distributing it to appropriate folks, depending upon which part you're talking about?
Yes, but a lot of that will be handed over to the project manager that is contracted.
All right.
Yes. But that's the structure.
Is there anyone online who would like to?
I don't see any hands.
Will we resolve the issues that you?
I'm good.
And I'll reach out to you, Greg, to get a little more.
Yeah, I can, I can provide you with a nice thought. And you can share with the others.
The major way all the way to lead is on updates. I have just kind of a brief one, but I'd like Greg to elaborate. So I listened in on the FinCon meeting last week, but I had a little trouble hearing through the Zoom call. I couldn't hear everything that was said. But there was some discussion about where we put our town cash. Mike Pratt had gone to a state conference.
Finance committee.
Finance committee conference. And he learned of other avenues that seemed like almost every other city or town in Massachusetts was using. But could you elaborate on that conversation a little bit? Because I had a, I had a hard time hearing the whole discussion.
So there's a, there's a state-run mutual fund that many communities place their, their excess funds in as a way to, and have that mutual fund manage the investments. So we, we of late have not done that. We've used various banks that we interact with and then we have an investment firm that we have, we did an RP for and selected them. So that was done through the Treasury. So the discussion the other night was, should we revisit the MMDT? It's called as a, as a potential additional vehicle to use for our, our funds, for investment purposes.
If I, what I think I heard was that Mike viewed it as a way to reduce our risk. There have been, you know, some banks that have gone out of business recently in the news. And the way this entity, this mutual fund was diversifying the, the load, it might reduce our risk. What I didn't hear was, did he also think we could get a better return in a, in a safe way? That's the part I didn't hear.
I think.
They're parking a lot of money in the cash.
I think they're comparable returns. He does feel that it's probably a lower fee. But that's, that's, I need to get verification of that, that data. So certainly the MMDT has a very low, low fee.
Okay.
It's, so it's something to take a look at.
So what, did someone take the action to go take a look at that?
That's the action set, we haven't done that yet, but we will.
Okay, so you're, remember your team is going to take that action, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so the action set was for Town Treasurer to put a summary of how monies are currently being invested.
Yeah.
And then circulate that and then have a further discussion after everyone has a more common basis of understanding how funds are currently invested.
That was the main thing I wanted to bring up.
Board of Health, they've been working on a brochure design, including what the Board of Health duties are, as well as the role of the public health nurse. Food inspections, what their next, the budget requests are. They're working on a tobacco permit. I guess this, as it pertains to businesses. I guess this, as it pertains to businesses. It's environmental, tobacco, marijuana, and electronic delivery regulation. And then the annual permits that they work on.
I'm still working on the weather regulations as well.
Oh, thank you.
Nothing new.
Well, maybe just a couple of things. I should have a, I exchanged some information with some of the folks in sustainability and on water and should have a model that you can work with this week and see how that works. And the seniors are pretty interested on broadening transportation opportunities here, point to point. And I think we're gonna explore that in more depth in January. I will chat with you on that a little bit more, Greg. But they're looking for, there just is not, not enough service, enough different times of the week to meet everybody's needs.
Have they looked at the, what they're doing in Gloucester, the van you can pull on an app?
The CADA, KPN Transit Authority?
It's, I think it's run by CADA.
Yeah.
But you, there are, you know, pickup spots and you can ask for it to arrive on an app and it seems to be
I don't know about the app, there is one, a CADA program.
Yeah, this one you, you pick up on an app. And I'm not, I haven't used it myself, but it's definitely something to look at because it's something they started small, I believe, and, and, you know, it's something completely bad.
Yes.
Yeah, it's an on-demand model, but there are set pickup spots, but they'll drop you off anywhere, I think, is the way it works.
Yeah, these folks are more interested in getting picked up at home, these are people that are housebound.
Understand.
Okay, more on that.
The school committee weeks ago, 13 days ago, discussed what they were looking for in a budget. And they agreed that they didn't want to lose any services. On the other hand, they had to be sensitive to the needs of their communities. We will hear more tomorrow. They are, they got a list from the superintendent of organizations that do audits, to use a forbidden word, of, of school systems, and agreed that Pam would look into the strengths and weaknesses. Not, I think none of them were private organizations, but what, what the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education can do, whether they want to have something that's specific in areas or whether they want a top-to-bottom survey. And I failed to write down the initials of the other organization, which they thought might be able to do a low cost. I think there was a suggestion, and it may not have been at the meeting, that, that perhaps Essex could spend its money reviewing the review work. None of this is gonna get much done on the budget, this is gonna be presented on the 13th of December.
Oh, that's pretty close.
And is there any, that big joint meeting we had of all the boards? I thought there was gonna be another one, did we have a timeframe?
I don't believe we have a timeframe, but I think
Maybe for January sometime. No, we need to, we need to get that on the calendar soon.
Thank you. After the schools presented its initial budget and, and people have had a little bit of time to look at it. And also, you know, holidays and
Would you like a motion guarding the consent agenda?
Yes.
I move that the select board approve the consent agenda.
Seven.
Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
And yes.
Okay. Someone ought to tell the lawyer for the Clarity Widgill Trust that Gar is not the person to send a letter to. His name is Mr. Bowing.
On the, yes.
Running a little behind.
And I assume Debbie that she will be sending him a nice note and you might gently bring him up today.
Yes.
Okay, we have a fair period.
I can be brief. Working on a troubleshooting electronic loading system. Making sure that we don't have another failure as we did at the last town meeting. So there's some good progress being made. Hope to, hope to report to you, certainly early first of the year, of some solution going forward. So that's that. The Community Center, as I'm sure everyone realizes, the, the board of, of the Community Center has, has voted to exercise their option to relocate the building. So that puts any discussions on a town lease on hold. Obviously, the Association, Harvard party cannot lease a building that they don't own. So that has to be resolved first. So if, if indeed the Community Center is able to relocate the building, then, then our involvement will, will be any. If, if indeed that doesn't happen, then, then we're able to restart the discussions about the lease, then, then we will. So we will see how that all transpires over the next, next few months. And then, yeah, the discussion on school budget, we just, we just talked about that. So I don't want to say much more there.
In that case, I move that we go into executive session for MGL, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to consider the purchase, exchange lease for value of real property if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body and the chair, so declares it, and not to return to open session, and I do so declare it. I also move that we go, continue into, onto an executive session for GL, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating positions of the public body and the chair, so declares, and not to return to open session.
Second.
Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes, and John?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to stand up for a few minutes.
You take a bow?
No. I just wanna see what you're supposed to make up.